Okay.
Order please rise to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on.
Jamie Bailey, board member.
Bernadette Bauer, board member.
Stephanie Smith, board member.
Michael Smith, board member, for assessment superintendent.
Andy Walker staff.
Kevin Bogner staff.
Wendy Bellin staff.
Susan Moore staff.
Mark Clark staff.
Megan Porter, yes.
Constance, uh, fast pitch booster.
Jeff Monroe staff.
Eric Smith staff.
Okay.
I'm in motion. Yeah, I make a motion to excuse Ryan Christelen from tonight's meeting.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded, is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, thank you Jamie. Okay, approval of board meeting minutes.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for two eight twenty three.
My second up.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda?
Before we approve the consent agenda, I would like to make two motions. The first one would be to move the approval of the girls' fast pitch fundraising to six, I don't know what you would call that.
Six B.
Six B. Under discussion items.
I think you'd like to have it under new business for action, right? Is there action to be taken?
Yes. There is.
So you have to, it would have to go to new business?
It's a ten.
It'd be pretty quick.
Okay, so move it to ten new business.
Can we do it on A? We'll move these other two down, put it in ten A and these other two to be.
Perfect.
See, so on. There's been a motion made.
Aye.
A motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Or I guess that was further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The second motion I'd like to make is to strike the approval of the CBA and EEA. So ten C and ten D approval of MOU between ETO and almost full district number sixty eight. For more time to review those.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And now I will move for the approval of the consent agenda.
And motion made?
Oh, I thought you made a motion. I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Same.
There's been a motion made and seconded. That was Jamie speaking, not me.
Yeah.
Well, I'm like, one of you.
Sorry.
That's alright.
There's a lot of motions to beat all the first stuff. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, oh, I forgot. Okay, discussion items. Board policy twenty twenty is the curriculum development and adoption of the instructional materials.
This is a board role for the year is that we actually have updated our instructional materials process. This is kind of like the second and the last stop before we have the instructional materials process completed. Washington State law actually is pretty open that instructional materials must be standards aligned and we must also have an open community engagement process for community members to review those standards, review standards for their alignment of kind of inherent bias and review those standards for alignment to curriculum standards. Last January, we approved board policy twenty twenty, which is the board policy on our instructional materials process. And what we're doing now is we are moving forward with the alignment of our instructional materials alignment, which is kind of a, the, the, the procedures in which we will be following. And I'd like to go through those tonight with you. Sharing myself. First is just the parent review documentation on the request for alternative instructional materials process. Our programs curriculum is supposed to be standards aligned. So if parents would like to make a request now, we've actually adopted within this the form that parents would fill out or to make a request on, I would like my student to be able to meet this standard in an alternative way. So now parents actually have that kind of overage, like this, I understand this is how they're doing it. But I feel like my, my student would like to have a, an alternative option on how my student meets standard. Second is a citizen's request to have instructional materials be moved back into the instructional materials review process. On, I feel like this is not meeting our standard for bias, or I feel like this instructional materials is not meeting our alignment for standardized alignment. Last, well, the second we also have is things that might be objectionable, so pervading or vulgar scene language, graphic sexual incidents, graphic violence, content unsuitable for the maturity of the audience, content inconsistent with the shared values of a civilized social order and content inconsistent with the district's basic educational mission. These are actually in alignment to OSPI's instructional materials adoption criteria on things that our community maybe should be looking for as part of our instructional materials adoption. I want to make sure I get them all. When we're looking for bias, like, do we actually have main characters or provided in a kind of a positive way? How are we showing the different community, like, members or are we very, being true to, you know, like historical events and members of our society? How are we looking at persons with disability and socioeconomic status and then family models? And again, this is tied to OSPI's content instructional materials requirements tied to Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Last, what I have included within this is the instructional materials reviewing process, like how our community members and committee will be coming together reviewing the instructional materials for those requirements that we had set within the board policy. A big one being like, are we actually meeting the, the standards that students are supposed to be learning? And then are we actually open and are we removing, are, are we meeting the community standards of our school district? So there's no action to be taken, these are not policies, but just kind of a follow-up on where we are in the process, how we actually have an evaluation criteria formed through the work of our teachers, our master-based learning work, we've mapped out the standards. So it'll actually be the master-based learning standards work that we presented on previously, on how we'll actually be evaluating the standards and how those standards align. And then this is how our, our, our instructional material will be moved from this place to forming a community-based committee. And, and our, our teachers and our educators will be making recommendations of instructional materials they would prefer to adopt. They would like to adopt that would go through this community-like meeting. Again, and that's state law that we have a public committee to review the instructional materials.
Would you address, it might not be in this section of policies. Is this where material, is there a policy currently or a document like you presented for parents to review materials?
One of those ones in there is actually the parent review.
So when, but I guess maybe I'm thinking, you know, when it's ninth grade health curriculum and parents are notified, this material is available for your to review. Do we have a district policy about how parents are able to access that?
Board policy twenty twenty, we did board policy that kind of ties to this and how parents make requests. A lot of what we're showing tonight is the actual, like, one of those is that request to review the curriculum. And one of those forms we have tonight in this grouping is how to request to review the curriculum. And then the other forum we have is a parent request to have their student excuse from that material or requesting an alternative way and meeting standard. So we have kind of both covered. So it might be that, like, in, in the example of sex ed, we use the state's curriculum. We decided to just not, that's with it, we would just use Washington state's required, like. Parents can submit a form and we can do a community request, and that's not even restricted to parents. Any community member could fill out a community request form for review. And it could be they can make an individual review and then it could go out to the entire committee for re-review if they found something that was like not in alignment with our twenty twenty policies and procedures. But then even if it was like, we're still in alignment with our district policies and procedures and the family goes, this might be aligned to, this might not be, might be fine for all students, but it's just still not fine for our family. We also adopted the previous form too for families to make an additional request to say like, I would like my child personally to be able to meet standard in the wrong way.
Um, I think I'm wondering, like, as a parent, I got an email for freshman help. And it was like, here's the dates and times you could review this. So it was more district initiated, the district put out. But I guess I'm asking, is it, do we have policy that there's always an evening? Or that it's also available during the day, or that it could be available? With Spanish, I'm just trying to think through.
We, we don't, it just becomes available. We've had areas where we've had community citizens come in and review curriculum. I mean, we had, moment, Kansas isn't here, but last year we had community members come in and hold up in an office and review all of our history books and review all of our sex ed books. So, but we've kind of done it informally without an actual formal process. So now we're, tonight, I guess tonight we're presenting the formal process and how those requests would be made. But we didn't want to restrict it to a timeframe that says like, from January first to this time, you can make a request. And we felt that it was more appropriate having it just publicly available, this, you can make a request whenever you'd like to make requests. And it's here for review. And we also didn't want to restrict it to just sex ed, we feel that as a district, it should be available to everything. Um, so this, this process tonight is making sure that everything is kind of like consistent across the board on how we do the process.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks.
Let me answer your question.
Yeah, I think so.
Anybody else have any questions?
It's kind of a different way to kind of look at it, is just saying, here's your window, we just want it to be fully available at any and all time.
Yeah, we're giving parents way more access to it.
Yes.
Yes.
Dramatically more access than what was there.
Okay.
And then, but then there's recourse, because we didn't have that community committee. So it'd be like, they reviewed it, they made their complaint, well, where does it go and where's an unbiased committee to go to? But now we actually have, we're, we're, we're from here, we're going to go back to building that community-based committee who will actually respond to those parent concerns. And then this will be a community-led committee who will be making those responses to that community concern.
Part of the due process, I think.
Within the due process. So then that we have a common part of board policy defines that due process, the board policy, and you joined the board, maybe that board meeting. It was that, we actually have a board policy, the board policy, the new board policy twenty twenty that was already approved. Because we adopted the board policy before we moved to this defines due process.
Thanks.
Okay, communications and comments. Uh, do we have anyone from ETO? EESP? ICOPA? Admin? Are there any persons to be heard, registered or public comment? Okay. Um, unfinished business, approval of board policy twenty oh five, school improvement plan, first reading.
I have a question real quick. Is this the first reading or the second reading?
I'm going to get to two thousand and five before I can tell you.
I feel like given it the second.
Second reading from the last one.
This is first read.
Is it?
We need to make an adjustment now that I've opened it up, it says June thirtieth.
First.
So we need to make an adjustment to this, so I'd recommend a review, sorry, I was out of state last month. We, last year it was under discussion items, our last meeting.
Yeah.
Discussion item, there was no board action.
Okay, okay, that's why. It goes on about it.
Thank you.
I would, I would like, we're seeking, we've locked down the June first date, but I would like to seek approval pending changes, eliminating thirtieth.
I move to approve the board policy two thousand and five school improvement plan, first reading.
I'll second.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, approval of removing board policy twenty eighty comprehensive student assessment system.
These are board policies and I think twenty eighty and two thousand and ten that are no longer supported by Washington and not followed by the district. And we're seeking to have these board policies removed. I think, yeah, twenty eighty was the last reviewed and updated in December of nineteen ninety nine. And not to make too much commentary, but I was still in high school.
Okay, now. That's cute.
Yeah, I'll move along and. Removing board policy twenty eighty comprehensive student assessment system.
This has been a motion made and seconded. Is there any additional comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of removing policy twenty ten learning improvement plans.
Move for the approval of moving policy twenty ten learning improvement plans.
I'll second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we are going to have the, I was trying to find the name, but I can't find it anywhere. It's a fast pitch, but I don't see it anywhere else on the agenda. Or, oh, it's because it's crinkled in my page, I can't see it, I'm sorry. You're up, Mr. Schwartz.
Do you have any questions?
Um, just a quick overview of what your, the requests, and I think we've got it in front of us, so I don't know if we have any questions so far. Could you?
I got a signed copy here, so.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm just going to make a couple of comments, and I do this to every booster group that comes up here. In regards to the business sign sales and donation collections, just make sure that you don't promise the businesses any special things at the games, like seating and whatnot. And, and then your fifty fifty drawings, you can only have three per year.
Yeah.
Okay. And the only other thing I would say is the youth game night. I'm assuming that's the younger kids coming and participating. And so with that, I believe the new things that are coming down the pike, there'll have to be insurance for that, Chris, am I right?
Yeah, using district facilities, we'll have to make sure we have third insurance available.
That's new.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
And, and Jeff, when, there's some insurance companies in town.
Mike Stilwell with Farmers.
Are you talking to youth, uh, fast pitch league?
It's, yeah, it's the only youth fast pitch.
Yeah, they're insured.
Add, add the location. Okay.
Cool.
I move for the approval of the twenty two twenty three fundraising for the almost all boosters as listed.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck. Thank you, sorry for all the confusion, yeah, we'll leave that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for.
Thank you.
Doing your best to. Yeah.
Okay, area of teaching assignments, Miss Bellin.
Well, maybe a quick request that Miss Bellin, just to keep your record for students that we have enrolled for our online school with gaps in the online certification process. We probably don't need to receive your signs that go up all under your current certificate. Area for kind of the ones and twos that are enrolled through our online school.
I'm for the approval of our area teaching assignment, Wendy Bellin, fourth through twelfth grade.
I'll second that.
Been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of first aid CPR trainer stipend.
Um, just, just part of all contracts paid out through the district must be approved by the board. We're just seeking approval to make sure that we're following state law that you approve all payments.
I'll move for the approval of first aid CPR trainer stipend.
Second.
It's an emotion made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
So with the asterisk and tabling, basically moving for more time on the approval of the CBA for the EAA, can we still approve the CPR training portion?
Yes. Okay, I think that was just an indentation and you'll notice it's no longer indented on this one.
Okay.
That was just a formatting error.
Thank you for the clarification. There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further communicate or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, board policy thirty two thirty, student privacy, first reading.
We are just searching in a, just a standardized update through our board policy on student, on student privacy and searching.
I'll move for the board policy thirty two thirty student privacy.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. I do have a quick question. Um, on the spot where it says, oh, I don't know where I am, A two. Um, down through the first set of strike through in the yellow, it says a superintendent shall develop procedures. The rest of the yellow, we're, we're keeping or we're striking through, the yellow is the removed portion?
Yellow is addition.
It's addition, okay, so then we're striking through the other portion.
Everything in yellow is a change.
Okay, thank you.
It's hard for, it's always all in yellow.
Yes, I have a hard time with the old and the news and the.
So what's, uh, stricken, rude, strike through is a change being removed? And what is yellow is a change being added?
That's fine.
Reinforces what I thought.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval for boys' basketball stay overnight February twenty fourth through the twenty fifth in Bellevue and approval to travel to Yakima for boys' basketball cheer state basketball tournament pending qualifications for February twenty eighth through March fourth of twenty three.
This is kind of a new and updated, I actually got a lot of appreciation for Mr. Clark. It's not a process that we have followed before, where we submitted the state to travel, but with board policy is all of our names, travel must be approved by the board. So Mr. Clark is actually bringing part of his continued improvement of our athletics department and it's part of the new tech form processes to make sure the board has documentation and copies of all budgets and everything that is being spent. This is kind of a meeting to board policy goals that we actually are following board policy on travel for overnight travel. Um, and so a lot of credit to Mr. Clark for trying to bring this up to standard.
I move to approve for the boys' basketball to stay overnight February twenty fourth through February twenty fifth, twenty twenty three in Bellevue and approve travel to Yakima for boys' basketball cheer state basketball tournament pending qualifications, February twenty eighth through March fourth, twenty twenty three. I know that's.
I'm just gonna say a second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Let's make a comment. Go equal.
Yes.
So exciting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, that's so exciting. Okay, uh, approval for Tyler Rens to attend the three-axis CNC machine training, March twentieth through the twenty fourth in Zanesville, Ohio.
So I don't know if you need any further explanation, but we invested in a lot of CNC machinery and we were on board and on track to send our staff in for training. But then COVID happened, and so now we're having the opportunity now to send Tyler Ren's back east to get further training on our CNC machinery so that we can implement that it more productively into our curriculum. And this would be paid all through our Carr Perkins and our CTE budget.
I'll move for the approval for Tyler Rens to attend the three-axis CNC machine training, March twentieth through March twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three in Zanesville, Ohio.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Chrissy. Okay, enrollment. We have that.
We have had a increasing enrollment, we are at we're at a sixteen hundred and ninety head count. We've actually increased our FTE enrollment to fifteen hundred and ninety eight, so just FTE being a full-time equivalent and head count being how many physical students are actually on our campus. So our February FTE count is at sixteen hundred and two, we kind of went up in November, back down in December, then continually coming back up since that point. Again, so those are just our equivalents, we used to have a lot of students that are kind of like part-time, you know, run and start, you know, so they, they make up that whole time student. So our enrollment is still continuing to grow, that came back down through December, down in January, and now we've rebounded, we're continuing. And we were budgeted at fourteen hundred and ninety two FTE. So we're one hundred and five above budget currently at this rate.
I don't have any comments, do you guys? Okay, thank you. Budget report, Lisa Arnold.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, I think you guys have my reports. Right now our fund balance is looking to be about one point six million. Um, I think there are revenue reports and an expenditure report. You have, um, the month end balances compared to other years. And your cash flow, is there any questions? And then I also wanted to let the board that my state audit has started. And so they will start communicating with you guys about, um, coming to the entrance for the audit and also, um, the exit, so if you'd please watch for those emails. Any questions?
Not for me.
I don't have any, thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, can I go back to the enrollment for a second?
Absolutely.
Um, is our, our jump, you think, from October to November? Could that be our TK kids?
The TK students would have a, um, an impact, because you'll notice in September, October, we went to one seventeen to November, one twenty two. They counted for about five FTE, but you'll notice that we had fifteen FTE overall impact. So the remaining ten FTE was pretty evenly distributed across all grade levels. So one third of it were TK.
Okay.
And you can see that by enrollment by month, TK were. And you can see that by enrollment by month, TK would be concurrent enrollment. So it's about TK is about five students on that student enrollment average.
Even though we have a lot.
Yeah, it's been slowly growing because you'll notice that we went from twenty-three or from seventeen to twenty-two in November, right? And I think that was that specific month. And then you move into December, which is about one more student and then February went two more beyond that. So so now we're up to about you know, you know, more, but we're still calculating out that average.
They probably were in the fall of January too.
Yes.
That are not fact into this yet?
No, they should.
Okay.
So I guess yes, but not all of it, like a third of it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, superintendent reports.
Um, we will be having a long range facilities committee meeting follow-up on March first at six PM in the Elma um in the Elma Elementary, in the elementary um multi-purpose room. We're really trying to ask for a lot of community involvement. We're gonna have some questions that we're gonna have to address. One big question is, is uh, it's Grace Harbor High School. We're gonna have to make some improvements on Grace Harbor High School students and kind of current status of the portable. Uh, second one is, is how are we gonna kind of have, how will we be housing the incoming population of students? I know Mr. Monroe has actually been running price quotes on portables. And what the expense of portables will be. And Lisa will actually be there to go through the expense and district-wide budget, kind of what budget would be available to be making the purchase of portables.
Um, how is the meeting being communicated to the community?
Um, so we have a list of any community member that has come in and spoken with us. We've collected all those email addresses. We've partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, trying to get uh business and industry partners involved. We've shared through social media. We've shared through automatic emailers. So um so.
And I guess my question would be that um, the argument oftentimes is that, um, you know, I don't do social media. I don't have email, yada, yada. Is there a way that we could make up some flyers to put in business windows?
Yeah, absolutely.
Account? Um. I don't think, yeah, just something quick to put in windows so.
In a high-traffic area.
Yeah. Yeah, just so we can make every attempt to get the information out there.
Do flyers in high-traffic areas.
Okay. It'd probably be twenty. I mean, it shouldn't be very many.
But our town hall meeting, they were, there was a group of about thirty parents that were there. They asked if when we sent emails about this kind of information, whether to do an auto call that could simply say, check your email. I don't know about that, but they don't typically look at their email, but we would just get heads up and we're not trying to complete the information verbally, but.
And I'm not so much worried about people that have kids in the district that, you know, are going to school because I know that those emails get
A lot of community.
I'm more concerned about the people that don't have kids in the district anymore than don't have access to the information.
Emails did we send out? Did we get responses back? There's three. How many families are there?
We sent three thousand emails.
We know both parents and we run, we run, I mean, well. Mr. Smith, you have jumped me to the next thing I was gonna talk about.
The other thing I was thinking when she said auto caller, this would be very intrusive, but auto call that we have a meeting coming up, just like we would if there's a snow day.
Yeah. I don't, I don't.
Can we do that?
Yeah, we can do that.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I mean.
I mean, I mean, you can't say that we didn't try.
I am ready to pull no limits. Uh, this, this is our current survey. This has gone out to three thousand emails have gone out. We've had one hundred and fifty-nine people log in, so we run. But we run one half, what is it? Five percent, five percent response rate. On our current survey that we're trying to run to just get community feedback. The last time we ran it, we sent it out, we ran a ten percent response rate. So for everything we send out, we get anywhere. I mean, we're, we're doing good if we have a ten percent response rate. So I'm willing to try anything to improve our response rate from five percent to ten percent to a but everything, I mean, like I said, everything that we're gonna be running is gonna be, everything we pull together, we really want to be community design, just want our community to own it. So flyers, autodiler, we can do an autodiler, especially on, it's a good day to get it Friday or Sunday, like Sunday, Monday or Friday.
Before a snow day.
Because the meeting's Wednesday the first, right?
Right.
I would probably do Monday. I know that Sunday nights, when I used to get the auto callers at six o'clock, I'd be like, are you kidding me? Just family time.
Calling at six PM.
You could automatically say it's school.
You don't wanna, don't wanna be alarming. They're all, yay.
School call. I know it's seventy degrees outside, but I mean, there's a snow. I mean, this and Eric has actually been working through a contract on a comprehensive communications plan rebuild, completely totally rebuilding the website, rebuilding the newsletter, rebuilding our parent emailing system. Um, so Eric has been spending the last week on re kind of moving through on how parents get information from the district. As we learned, our, our website is not currently supported um by our web distributor anymore. Um, so that means uh you're trying to maintain and maintain updates. It's been really difficult. I think I'm, I'm willing to try whatever way to communicate with parents. As Eric is currently working to install a whole new parent communication tool that we're hoping to launch by the time the school year starts next year. Which should kind of be a full before rebranding process. So I'm great with the autodiler, I'm great with flyers. We really want our community to be involved in the design of what, want our community to open what our district is doing.
Okay, okay. Could we also put maybe across the, the reader board?
Yeah, actually I have a note earlier to um have some reading, making sure that our reader boards are all up to date.
I think in like it's too short and nervous now, but um i- in the big picture, I think one of the things is for us to teach people how they can consistently trust where they can find information, which I knows what you're saying about the website because you know, or whatever it is, it's just oh, this way, we went out this time, this way, or this time, this way. So us being honorable about having some consistency. Um, I do think Jamie, for some of the people who are not our at-large tech people, um, people still drive Main Street and in something like this, I, I don't think you'd want to have it out all the time, but with some hindsight, um, you know, putting up a, a banner along the parking lot and says, you know, facilities, meaning da, da, da. I mean, that's just a, a spot. Almost everybody does drive by Main Street at some point, um, minus your outlier people, I guess, but but there also has to be a point of like, people have to also like show some initiative to want to know some communication too, right? So hopefully this will help them know how to do that.
Well, I think one of the big benefits of the new system Eric is building is now we can start collecting parent community, like parent community contact that we can start pushing information out on. Um, we haven't had that capacity yet. So that's gonna be simple how to help parents.
It's actually all parents where is the, is the they have a side too as well. District one platform. So what's my all communication app through parents' person, all parents within know that it's the one location that we'll communicate.
Just a random question. Could you create, even if sugar white, but within that, because I think the group we're talking about is not necessarily parents. Right? So is there a way to create a, within the parents for a platform, a class that is not parents?
They do have that community connection at the moment as well. So that's
I, I see your eyes getting, getting.
So yeah, we will definitely, as we begin to roll out this, we'll definitely look at how, how the community side would connect with.
Thanks for the expert idea.
It sounds like we have the technology coming. I'm just hoping that we have.
Oh, we have, we have a communication, like a PR plan. We have a technology and a contract for the implementation unfolding. Which is also going to include reach out to the community and how our community wants to be communicated with. Um, because we've tried fifteen different ways. So actually going to our community saying, how do you want to receive information? How are we tied into the right information? Are we, are you, I mean, we're putting information out X, but you want to see it via B. I mean, are we actually getting the information out of a way that our communities look for it? So I think um Eric.
And parents will have, they'll have a much easier way of determining like how they want to receive the communication. They always want to receive it in a text. It wants to, so they want to receive it in an email. So they'll have the ability to choose.
I think being realistic, I mean, we're not gonna get everybody, right? It's just not gonna happen. But I think if we um get the information out there in several different ways, that it's easy for someone that says, oh, I wonder what's going on here. And they're able to access something to get that information.
Right.
And I think we're good. I mean, I, yeah.
Do we know the statistics on sending out actual mail? Even if it is at the reduced rate, obviously, we probably don't want to set it at the fifty-five cents per mailing, like that. Twenty-five cents per mailing for route mailing, which is just a zip code ninety-five for one.
When we sent out like parent engagement mailers, there's, there was like a fall off generationally on what, you know, so it's, it's, I mean, like with our parents, we're getting it right in their email. We have about a five to ten percent and it's not, doesn't really improve when we even mail it, when we mail it home. I think with our um community population who doesn't have students in school, um, mailers that work. But how do you delineate that population from the other population? Again, there's like about six thousand registered voters we'd have within our community. You know, fifty cents, you know, about three thousand dollars to try to hit them for about five percent population. But you know, so trying to make sure we're balancing it with the cost of how much it costs every time we're sending something home.
What if we didn't send something? And this is just a thought out there. If we didn't send something home every single time we were having a meeting or or whatnot, but like a one-time flyer that says we, we hear you, here's where you can get the information you need at any time you need it, basically.
Like a newsletter. Maybe it's twice a year or something. I, I, I don't know because I don't know how far out we have these meetings scheduled, but if, if we did it something that said all the important dates, right? Like obviously our board meetings are when they are and we did know when the facility meetings were. So that's all information that could go in there. And then there could be a couple tidbits in there about how the school district's doing. And I think that probably would go a lot of ways.
I think that's the, the rebuild on the new district website, like the current district website is not allowing to the actual news press releases and news information. How it's gonna take that information kind of authored and then out to families on, we're, we're kind of.
The automation of it, what happens when it goes out in this, this method, it posts a website on.
And that's kind of the limitation with our current web system is it doesn't allow the timing, it doesn't allow the distribution to the families. So you kind of make sure that all that information is coming out at it. Like I, I think not just what and where, but also when, like when you count on getting information. We don't have that automated. And then we don't even have, like the how is not systemic across the entire district, which is also kind of leads to another issue we have. Um, elementary communicates one way, middle school communicates another way, high school communicates another way, which is why Eric is trying to relaunch it within this parent square system. Maybe so that parents have one reliable way to count on getting information. We're almost suffering from um a communication like noise because you get information from the district one way, the elementary one way, the high school one way. This could actually be its onboard presentation because we don't have this on the agenda. And I don't want to move too far down the road on a non-agenda item. But I do think um Eric is working on it. We're pretty aware of a lot of the problems we have, being like there's you have this, people don't know where, I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think our biggest problem is for not getting information out. Our problem is, is we've gotten so much out now that no one knows how to sift through it and know what's important and know how to get it. Or are we getting it to them in the way they want to receive it? Because it's like going out on social media, it's coming out of parent email, but I also got a newsletter from the elementary school, but I got the high school newsletter here and I got my parents' student grades that come in on Thursday morning. And I got this post that came out this way. It's, 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 there's this tough component on understanding what is important, what I'm getting. Eric was going through all the parent emails that we've sent out and all the ways that we've invited parents to different events. It's almost too much.
I hear you.
So I, I, I think um when we met, we almost just need to rip the bandaid off and rebuild it from the ground up.
Eric's.
Well, Eric has been having the meetings.
One more band. I, I think, I think what we're all trying to say is we really do want to get the message out there.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We need to try, obviously what's, what we're doing is not working, so we gotta try something.
We do. I think so in the short term, we're gonna put this out every which way we can. Autodiler, reader boards, flyers hung up throughout the community. But then in the future, on the rebuild of the district communication plan, I think we need to kind of work on a, 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 a pairing down and just systemizing it so that our community comes familiar with how they will be getting information. So I think we have a lack of familiarity on how you'll get information. So we have two problems. We have the short-term problem on how do we get people coming up to our most immediate meeting where we have decisions that need to be made and we would like to have our community be a part of it? And then how do we respond to the next level issue, which is how do we rebuild our communication systems for going forward in the future?
I have just have one more thing real quick on the long-range um facilities meeting next week. I know when we started it a year ago, that Jody and I attended the first one and then we kind of backed off. And we, and there was no board members present through that process. Um, I'm almost thinking that there needs to be a board member present, but non-verbal.
I think it would be great to have one, if not two, because it should be assigned. I think especially as we're having a lot of our ongoing community meetings, it's great to have one to two board members, you know. Um, especially like Stephanie's been involved in our early learning programs. Bernadette has been a long part of our career pledge readiness initiatives. So I would agree with you. And if two board members would like to maybe work with Bernadette on who they would be.
Okay, we're moving on to Delaney.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, I can't be there in person tonight. Um, was definitely a little bit worried about the roads because it's been snowing a lot um over at my house today. Um, I will keep my report pretty brief, especially because um, you know, I'm over Zoom and going through the board thing is kind of difficult. But I just wanted to use my report tonight to encourage people to pay attention to how they're looking at their past, their present and their future. And giving grace to having been unaware of things in the past. Giving grace for the process of growth in the present and how difficult that can sometimes be to see progress. And also giving grace to be ready for that change in the future, because sometimes that's something that we think that we aren't ready for. But we're just scared. And so we need to find a way to redirect that scary feeling in our stomach um into thinking of it as energy rather than directly thinking of it as fear and thinking of it as energy to be a more positive potential for a better outcome. So that's all I have. Um, I hope you guys have a great rest of your night. And I'll talk to you guys soon.
Thank you, Delaney. Okay, uh, we will go ahead and um adjourn to the, well, we won't adjourn. We're gonna um move into executive session for thirty minutes to evaluate the superintendent. And we will not be taking any action.
We will come back at seven twenty-one.
I say, be careful.
Get to drive the Camille chief.
Oh.
Bad. I just came through. I'm sticking or nothing.
Just be careful anyway. Thank you. Brian's gonna be missing on this chunk.
Earlier on.
The rest are all. The rest are all signed. Thank you. Good night, Caleb.
Do you want me to leave so you can look at each other? You haven't had a chance just.
I moved to adjourn.
My second.
There's been a motion made to and seconded to adjourn the meeting on paper.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Okay, now I have a different question about my hearing.
Yes.
Coach Neil.